We need the cord, the HDMI cord. Go in here, in case we have any other stuff.
Oh, they use their adapter. We actually have our own adapter. Maybe I'll leave this one out, because I think that one was in the back. This looks like the one on top.
This does not.
I wonder if it's quality? I'm just curious.
Okay, there's some of this, some of the board. Hi Sam.
Hello.
Hi Sam.
Hola. How are you this morning?
Good. How are you doing?
I am very, very good. I'm glad I'm home.
Down the review, so it doesn't look so awful.
I'm glad I'm home. I was in California for about five days. I went to my reunion, my class reunion, had a ball.
I have done it both ways. So.
Okay, let's get rolling. The clock is fast, so we are on time. Okay, so pledge allegiance. Chris, you want to lead us?
Start over. Okay, pledge allegiance and pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, never beeth just as he hath all. Can you join us? The four-way test. First.
Is it the truth?
Second.
Is it fair, all concerned?
Third.
Will the good, well, the better, first trust?
Four. Fifth.
Who's the God?
And then six. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eileen. You have our inspirations and us today today.
I do. This comes from Oscar Wilde, and it is, "It takes great courage to see the world in all its tainted glory, and still love it."
Thank you very much. Do you have any guests today? Good mornings, Zoomers. Can you hear us? Yep. Okay. Hi Jack. Jack, you need to finish your ceiling.
Yes. Yes, I do. I worked on it a couple of weekends ago. I got some more to do before I painted. Getting close, though.
Okay, so, any visitors? Okay, birthday. So today, from the 15th to the 21st, we have Keith Hardington has a birthday coming up. And a spouse birthday would be Adam Spledek, which is Hannah's husband, Alison's husband, and his birthday is today, so happy birthday, Adam. Okay, no other, we're no wedding anniversaries this week coming up, and no Rotary anniversaries to announce. Announcements. I do want to just let you guys know that we have a polio day coming up on October 24th. So you'll see a link on our Rotary, or Rotary Facebook page, or Rotary Relief. It's called Raise for Rotary, and they're raising, still raising money too, because they're still working in Afghanistan and Pakistan on the polio issue. We have a district celebration coming up, May of next year, the 13th to the 15th, Semiamu. Friday night is the foundation dinner, which is really fun, and they always have a really great presentation. And then Saturday night's a gala, and there's going to be speakers and classes, and anyone who's interested in getting a group together to go to Semiamu. And it's so close, we could even drive them down for the weekend. I do want to let everyone know that if you're interested in a position of volunteer in the club, that all the club training, position chair training is on the Club, what's that, the District YouTube channel. So you can easily go on there, just check out their positions, what they do, what their responsibilities are, how much fun they have. The Rotary International Convention, which I don't think we've sent a crew there in a while, but it's going to be in Houston in June. That's the biggie. That one would be well worth a trip if things are open, if anyone wants to put a group together for that. And yesterday, I booked our holiday party at Rustic Cork on December 8th at 5:30. So more information will be coming out about that, but know that we have a holiday party this year coming up, and mark your calendars, so you don't miss anything else. We have a great event out at Burkehead Art Center the other night. We called it bowling night. We had 13 people there, and we all painted hand-thrown bowls that were, will be fired, and then we're going to donate them to the Lacy and Stewie's empty bowls fundraiser. Melissa, or Melinda Burkehead, or Melinda, who owns the facility, is going to be our speaker next week. And it's a fabulous place. It's going to be, she'll give a really good talk. It's interesting. I think we may have some more events out there, because it's really, it's a cool place. And we had fun. I thought it was really fun. There's no cell service, which was the best part, so none of us could check our phones, or look at Facebook, or do any of that. It was really, paint your bowls, laugh, have a glass of wine, and it was a great event.
It's out there way beyond Gold Bar, right?
I'm pretty sure we were in Cashmere. Pretty close to Cashmere, but it was high. But it was worth it. It was, I think it was a 17-minute drive from the Times Square, which isn't bad, but it was good. Okay, so that's really my present report. So past president, come on, women, treasure Lori. Do you have anything on the treasury? Okay, so, if you want a copy of the financial statements for some nice life or anything, there is a copy here, and it does give you a summary of how we did with the parts of the case and so forth. Let's see, cash balances are looking good in the bank accounts with what was just settled with the greater giving for our auction. Your company has about $28,000 in our foundation bank account, so that looks good. And what else could I tell you? Oh, see, endowment fund, a Vanguard Endowment Fund, where we fill all our happy bucks and other donations in. It is now up to $82,360. I think that's all I have. Thank you very much. Okay, secretaries report, Gary. Are you here at 3, is it 3 o'clock by the time? No, Gary. Which is another reason I think that we should all, when Gary gets back, that guy needs a round of applause, because we scrambled this morning to get the lights on and all the stuff out, and the flip up, and all the things. And Gary's usually the first one here, turns on the lights, warms it up, you know, gets it going, so we really need to thank him a lot. President-elect, Mr. Ballard, do you have anything?
Yeah, so we did have a really great auction that went well, as you heard the report from Lori there. A couple of things, we're going to be sending letters up for our great sponsors, and thanking, thanking them for what they did for our Rotary group and for our, like, local community out is the biggest thing. If anybody has any suggestions for next year, they're all welcome. There's no bad suggestion, you know. Everything looked pretty good, you know, everything always has a glitch here and there, but let's build it up and make it better the next time. And a very important thing, people, I have extra tickets left over, but we have to make sure we get them into Angie. So who has extra tickets? We want to make sure we get them into Angie, to bring them here, all in to her. It's really important in case there was an audit, so we got to do that. Other than that, let's have a great meeting.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Okay, club services, Katie. Community services, Brian Ruiz. Okay, Brian. Foundation, Jim Hagan.
Can we go back to the media service thing?
No.
So we're, we kind of, Harvest Fest, Harvest Market is doing something on the 23rd. It's 10, 11?
11 to 4.
11 to 4, and we're planning to have a booth there, so we're looking for volunteers that want to show up, to kind of hang out, and what have you. So is anyone interested to hear from doing that?
Dawn.
Dawn, like that.
Gina, awesome, thank you.
So we'll figure it out in the end. We'll maybe split it up a little bit, and that's how we did the other thing. It worked pretty good.
Yeah, we'll split it up, and we're going to possibly, the Arts and Parks Foundation already has a booth that is already paid. And when we talked to Sarah, the Farmers Market Director, the other day, there's not quite enough room for Arts and Parks and Rotary in our stage block. Usually, you know, all summer we alternate it between one and the other, so putting us both at the same time, so we may end up in the same booth, which is great. Arts and Parks people are awesome. And so I'll be there at 10 to start setting up, and we're just probably going to do one booth, or possibly a bigger booth, but it'll be us and Arts and Parks, and we're going to decorate it with, you know, lights and pumpkin decorating, or pumpkins, green, all the Halloween stuff, because kids are going to be in costume. Arts and Parks, they sponsor a community band, Lacy Stevens Community Band, but they're awesome. They're actually mind-blowingly awesome, and it's all made up of community people. And they're going to be doing a concert at 1 o'clock, and they're encouraging people to bring their kids in costume, because they're going to do a, what is it, a dance bash, so kids could dance in costume, because it's going to be Thriller, and Monster Man, and The Thing from Harry Potter, and all the fun songs that the kids will have along the front. So I encourage you to sign up. It's going to be amazing.
All right, and then Kyle, are they going to try and do something next Tuesday?
Yeah, I've already created the event, so we're doing, the North Shore Swim Beach, right there where the event is. We set up for Tuesday at 5:30. We're just going to be right there as our meeting. And we're going to work on, right now, it's just basically pulling some of the garden weeds that are throughout that area. And then, I know you're, can you get me to take the sand out there, so you can spread sand, because it's a bit of potholes in there you want to fill in. And then, the goal is, is that sometime into the summer, though, or early spring, when the weather clears up, we'll fix up the fence pane a little bit, and then we can keep that kind of going for next year. That's just kind of the first event that we're doing, and then I did create an event for it, but I know we're trying to get it on the Rotary Facebook page. And then, yeah, so the goal is, if you guys see it, you can just share it. That would be great, just because the more people get to see that. And then if you all want to join, that'd be great too, and you'll have a good time. So that's just the first event.
At 5:30?
5:30, yeah, there's a meeting right there, and I put the address on the event, just to, you know, to direct you to Swim Beach, I think, for the party.
Planting arclay, sure, right.
Yeah.
Who's applying the sand?
Uh, the, I'm just saying, the city.
Can you put sand and soil in?
They have specifics that they use typically for Disney.
I put it in the lake.
We don't want to make it toxic.
So the foundation, everything seems to be going good. $82,000, our, our, our part of our foundation. So there's a little thing going on here, between now and the end of December, that if you're going to contribute $300 more, the district is going to match that amount. Larry Jewett is going to donate some of his points. And so, so $300 gets you $600, or $500 gets you $1,000. So if you're interested in doing that, these are some evaluation points, you can put it to Polio Plus, or you can put it to the annual fund, and those are your Paul Harris Award amounts, as they all are. And it's going to be World Polio Day is the 24th of October is what, so. I don't know if everyone got one of those little cards in the mail. I thought it was mailed out there. But, but yeah, so World Polio Day is pretty cool.
Okay, international, yes. I have a packet of letters that were translated by Kristen, so I'm going to read a couple of them, because look at how they decorated it. I mean, isn't that just darling colors and everything? So this is from Suami Esmeralda.
Zoomers, can you hear Tracy?
Okay, thank you. Greetings. Hello. Good morning, Peter. How are you? I hope that you are well. I love you a lot. I am a girl in second grade. Thank you for your help that you have brought us. I ask God that you and your family have good health. My goal is to continue studying until I graduate. I love to study, and I like school. I like to clean it, and I love to play in it. I love to sing when you come to make you happy. Have a happy day. Signed, Suami. And one more here from Evelyn Yarrelli Lopez Perez. Dear patrons, I gave you, I give you all thanks for the supplies that you have gifted us, and because you support us with study, and thank you alls for the uniform that you have gifted us. And I am telling you that I am in sixth grade, and next year I am going to seventh grade, and I hope that you continue helping me with my studies, and I hope that you are all in good health, and that God continues blessing you, and gold for all of you every day. Blessings. Those are two sentences. So I've got more, pass them around, but it's just wonderful what we are making a difference.
It's been noticed.
Yeah, thank you all for the International Committee. We did pay money to adopt our school, Rio Amarillo, or village. We adopted Rio Amarillo. We adopted village?
Cool.
I think we adopted the school. Something.
Someday, someday we'll take that whole village.
Yeah.
And there's school spots available if you want to sponsor a child?
Yes.
Or a student, for, it's a three-year commitment. What is it, $180 a year?
$180 for middle school, $280 for a high schooler for three years, so. And those are the, those are the.
And that's per year.
Per year, yep. Where I think on our second year, because I just got the notice in my email saying, hey, time to sponsor again, so. Thank you.
Yeah, it's super easy, and it's very hard to appreciate. Okay, membership run, no run. So I heard there was a big fire at the Bellas, so that's probably where Ron and, Ron and Ted and I. Vocational services, Mr. Morehouse.
So just a quick update, I've received permission to run background checks from about half of the club. You can still send me that information, just your name and your birth date, and I will be submitting that first group of people today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, interrupt, anything on interrupt, Tim?
Uh, no.
Hey, Mr. Ballard, you have anything else to ask?
Uh, they are in their recharter process, so they are doing pretty well at that, making their deadline. We have the turtle troop is doing amazing things. I don't know, have them come at some point, and that's about it.
Awesome. Are they, are they doing popcorn this year?
I'm not exactly sure on that.
You should have them come.
Yeah.
They do popcorn.
Yeah.
Okay, Rotarians in Action. You already did your report?
Yeah, yeah, basically, the other thing beyond that is we're still meeting the first and third Tuesday of the month. I know, I think it's, was it, I think the next month, it's, it's maybe a weird time where it's like, there's another, it'll be like three weeks before we have another meeting, but we're still meeting the first, third Tuesdays of the month at 5:30. If it's not at Ryan or Sisop's or Crest Street or the clubhouse, you'll, I will, I'm going to work on sending out emails like Gary does for Rotary Act, so hopefully see that, so they, it's maybe, and then, yeah, we're having a good time, we're getting people to show up, and fun. Love to see more people show up if they'd like.
There's a lot of Angie at those meetings. It's really, it's a cool vibe. It's going to be a really good event. Okay, so public relations, we have had, I think I told you, a chair switch. So Angie's work schedule is so busy that Eileen has stepped up and taken over public relations for us, and she's been rocking it. So great. She's been thanking all of our corporate agents and boy sponsors over the past two weeks. So when you do see those on the page, please like them and share, because our sponsors are what makes our event really a success, because they really step up for us. So Eileen, you have anything for a third part?
No, but if you have something that you would like to post, please send it to me, and I'll make sure that it gets up. I've been doing scheduling, which means my life's so cheesy.
Yeah, and I have your swag. So for you on Zoom, Lance, I'll bring it to the office, so you get it. But yeah, so your stuff is here. Did everybody, did everyone order?
No, not everybody did.
Okay, so this is kind of an important case. This is kind of important, because, so this not only is amazingly cool and fashionable, but when you wear it, everyone around town says, hey, what's that? Oh, road reply, right? So it's really awareness for us too, Zoomers.
Yeah.
So just, I'll just show you what I've ordered. Okay, look, it's so cute. It's a road reply. So there's lots of, how many shirts do we get? We got another one. Oh, I think that's for Ken. This one's for, look at how cute, and a V-neck, which Mr. Moore has requested for years. Oh, this must be for Ken, too.
Yeah, because you guys did it.
Yeah, and this is, so this is a good weight. It's thick. It's not a cheesy, you know, sometimes you order these kind of things, and you might get a cheeseball sweatshirt that doesn't last or whatever. This is really thick, but without being, it's not Carhartt big, but it's thick enough to be easy and comfortable for projects, others. What? Okay, oh, okay.
That one's for you.
This is mine. Okay, so, zip hoodie, everywhere, but where you, everyone should get, at least get something. Wear it around town, wear it everywhere, just a neat for my home. If you missed out on the order, you can go to Screen Printers Northwest and order your own stuff, because they now have the embroideries set up, so you can go and order whatever you want, or you can take something in, and they have it in a writer, for a minimal cost. So don't feel like you can't get stuff. You can go and order it individually, and then it takes a couple of weeks to arrive. I think that.
Hold on, Eileen, what's that link again?
It's, it's not a link. It's, it's to Screen Printers Northwest. They're right there on Kobe.
Okay.
North end of Kobe on the west side. So they're right near where Patty's egg nest used to be.
Okay, perfect. So you just go there, or you can order?
You look through the catalog, you'll decide what kind of apparel you want to buy, or if you want to bring something in that you already have, and then there's a minimal cost to have the embroidery done, and it takes a few days.
Cool, thanks, Tim.
No, so I think we should do another one, right? Because we have so many new people in our Rotarians in Action Club, and I'll take care of it if you don't have time, because I know you work a lot. I have no problem coordinating that, and we'll just show them, now that we have something here to feel and see and know exactly what you're getting for, whatever, what is this, $35? You know, something in that range, but I think the evening club, this will be a good pile to take there.
The sweatshirts were $27.
$27?
That's it?
I'm going to buy 10 more.
And then if you do, if you do larger sizes, 2X and above, there's an additional cost for the larger sizes.
But it's like $3 or something?
Yeah, it's not that much.
This is awesome. Yeah, but we should definitely put another one together right away, and start it, maybe not to Swim Beach, but the following meeting.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just, we have the swarm still?
I do. I can email it out.
Yeah, if you want to see more of that form, and then we can just bring it out.
Yeah, it's just important, I think, that we wear them.
And the candy.
What?
Yeah, a whole would be awesome. Extra baseball hat, if you'd like to purchase one with Lori.
And how much are they?
I don't know what we decided about, we work on, I think it's 15 or 17.
Forty bucks.
They were, give me just a second.
So they're under $20.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a cool, this is a nice hat.
$12 or something. It wasn't worth that expensive at all.
No, and it's, it's a nice hat, and it doesn't make you look like you're, you know, a rotarian.
They were $10.98.
$10.98 for this?
Plus $8 per one?
Yeah, yeah.
No, the embroidery was in, oh, yeah, plus $8.
Yeah, so $18, so $19 are ready. Yes.
I'll take one.
All right.
Yeah, they're nice.
All this is them what you wore right now.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is, this is amazing. Okay, so anything else, Eileen? Has our new public relations chair. We also have a new official, new IT chair, which was something that Angie has been helping us with too, and sharing activity. Mr. Chris Martin. Do you have anything of a report of your committee, Mr. Martin?
No, looks like you might order some new equipment, maybe new tripod, some teachers, but shouldn't be the only new action.
Awesome. So the money that we collected the day that we did the collection, we passed the hat, we raised $360 or $380. And so Dawn has been researching, and he's bought some things, and Chris now has a couple more things to buy or whatever. But that's where that money, we're funding our new setup, so that we can do what we're doing from anywhere, is through that, that question.
You know, this might be a good time to ask the question of the Zoomers. We haven't bought any kind of a fancy pants microphone yet, and we've tried a few other microphones, and the one that's actually on the computer seems to be the best of all the ones we have, without getting something really fancy. So I question you, is this generally good enough?
My answer would be only if the direction of the speaker is kind of towards us. A lot of times, when it's going out to the crowd, of course, you know. Um, a lot of times, when it's going out to the crowd, of course, you know, you're presenting yourself, it's really difficult to hear. When it's a little bit more directional, um, I pick up things better. And whoever is closer to the computer, of course, I hear the best.
Okay, yeah, with, uh, yeah, the podium is at a weird spot today, so it's kind of a bit further away, but normally it's pretty close.
But can you hear me?
But I, I would say today has been better than many other meetings that we've had, so, uh, whatever you did today is working.
We were late.
The next thing was the podium's in the hallway.
And so did you, like, you know, when Chris did his report, Chris is sitting in the very back row by the window. When he did his report, could you hear him?
I, I actually heard him today. I don't know you, Sam, but, uh, in the past, we could not hear him.
I heard him today. I heard him today.
And the Tre- Lori, which is your treasures report from afar?
Um, it was, uh, uh, I could hear it, but I did one of these.
Okay, perfect, that's good news.
Well, you know, if, if we could always approach it in the future if we need to, but for now, I think we're kind of got our Zoom thing set up with a very low budget operation. We're using the Chromebook, seems to be working, okay, from, from Sherwood, so, um, I think we're good.
Which reminds me, uh, next Friday, the service center is, has something else booked, so we're gonna be on Zoom. Again, we were, what, last week? So we're gonna be on Zoom again next week for everybody. So Zoomers, you're gonna be joined by everyone else. Um, and that link will go out this week from someone, maybe here, or Jim. Okay, Sergeant of Arms, Mr. Ballot.
Okay, so we'll do the duck pull, pull the duck.
And we do have a new Sergeant of Arms.
I think I did.
You think you won?
Oh, that's it, thank you. So let's see, I think we have, uh, Marcus, you want to pull it? Take it out?
I don't wanna, I got tickets too, so I don't wanna.
You better not be a builder or a developer.
Seven, four, three.
I'm about right here.
Good job.
So, um, wanna make sure?
Get that back?
Yeah.
I trust him.
Yeah.
I trust the word.
Nobody else is jumping up, so.
How big is the pot, Lori?
Hey, yeah.
Nope, never, I would never.
It's, it's, it's possible.
Lori, how much is the pot?
Out of there.
Thirty-two dollars. Oh, congratulations.
Okay, so how's everybody doing today?
Great.
What?
Great.
Good. So, um, anybody have a, a pin or missing a badge or anything like that?
Pin, if I have a pin.
Pin.
Do you have a pin outside of your badge?
Nope.
Okay.
Chris's exam.
I thought his sponsor had to pay.
Yeah.
All right, this is ten, cool. Oh, yeah, good, I'm good, good.
She has a pin.
Got some pins on, good, pins? Pins. These pins over here, I will use.
Well, they have to be showered, right?
How about that anyway? Okay, good, awesome.
She's got all kinds of things.
Good, awesome. Nice. Okay, wow. Badges, ready, good.
Awesome.
All right then, so does anybody know what day it is?
Friday.
Friday, and it's kind of like a blue Friday, right? Look at this. So, anybody got Seahawks on? If you don't, touch a dollar.
Right here, oh, yeah, right here.
Okay, any more dollars over here? Awesome, okay.
I don't have anything blue on.
All right.
I know.
Thank you. Over here. Seahawks gear on. Mariners, we left that slide, no. Okay, we can do that later. How about you?
Yeah, whoa, nice, nicely done.
All right. All right, Seahawks coming together. All right, okay, good.
Thanks, Dyer. I stole that idea from the chief.
Okay, so. Are you gonna get the Zoomers?
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you.
Cause Zoomers, how about you guys?
Oh, look at last, he was hoping.
Any Seahawks? Okay, we got no Se- oh, hey, okay. Yeah, okay, so just remember to zoom something in.
Zoom?
Yeah. So I have a question for everybody. Since the Seahawks are in full swing, so who is the quarterback of the Seahawks?
Geno Smith.
Geno Smith, winner. Everybody else put a dollar in.
Here, I'll put five in for those who don't know.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Okay, all right.
Well, you know, you could say Russell Wilson too, he's still the quarterback, he's just not playing.
Yeah, he's the current quarterback.
The starting, starting, yeah.
On this lane here. One last question. So the, the injured quarterback on the Seahawks is?
Russell Wilson.
Okay, so if somebody can answer this next question, then they're exempt, and everybody else has to pay a dollar. So we have to have a squad and a team to support it. So why is Russell Wilson not playing? Finger surgery!
It's a hammered finger.
Who is it?
You know, raise your hand first.
Okay, good, okay, good. So you're exempt. Okay, we're gonna put a dollar in. I'm not voting until it's eight thirty.
We have a classification talk, so we're saving our last dollar, so. Wait here. The last.
Treasure loves coins.
You know, that's actually a good idea, bringing all those quarters in.
Maybe the diet. Last, we're not, ladies, any happy bars? Why are we happy today?
I'm happy. I drove up to Joyce's house, I kidnapped her, she didn't even know I was coming. I went to Aaron's today. You're lucky she was dressed. Good point. So I ran out the back.
I get my granddaughters all weekend, they're both coming over today. Oh, yeah, how old are they? They are four and six. Oh, cool, perfect age. Any Zoomers up there? Happy Zoomers?
Yes, I would like to put in five dollar happy bucks, because I had a wonderful time at my reunion in California, my class reunion. I don't want to even say how many years, but five dollar happy bucks, because I'm glad I'm home, and I get to see all your lovely faces.
Nice, very good, thanks.
And I'm just plain happy I put in twenty bucks by Venmo, I think ten of it was my commitment from last week, so I got up.
Right, awesome. How about you?
I'm just happy, like, I got picked up this morning.
Yeah, oh, you got there, John? Anybody else happy?
Okay, uh, I'm happy because it's Friday, and the market is up with you. Oh, my heart is going up today.
You guys happy over here? It's Friday, I'm not happy, the Warren's happy, because tomorrow's the investor club meeting, so Warren's gonna make us somebody tomorrow. Happiness over here?
Oh, uh, I'm a Ben Mower, uh, I'm just happy for that, we, I had so much fun at the bowling night the other night, hitting those bowls, that was really great, and the goal is to do something every month, so we have October covered, um, December will be our holiday party. We'll have something coming out for November, and, um, it's really, we're just, we're fellow, building fellowship and bring a friend, right? So somebody will love our club and join. Eileen, um, if you didn't get to do the goals on Wednesday, uh, Burkett is also doing the free event on Saturday, so you still have to be on the date, and then they'll fire, and then you can go and buy your goal back if you're ready. Which is what we're all doing.
And this is just because I'm always happy to be here and after work.
So, yeah, that is the art thing.
Linda?
Yeah, does she have a phone number? Cause I, I would kind of, well, I had so much fun there, I think I'm gonna take my daughter there. She's like thirty-four years old, but she does that kind of stuff, I think, so I'd like to.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
It's on, it's the next event, do you wanna do, like, ask for the bowls?
Well, no, I'm just.
So it's burkett, burkettartscenter.com. And they have all the, they do painting classes, um, ceramic classes, throw, and, um, other, handling and all of that, and then they're doing metal.
Cool.
Yeah, the metal shop was really cool.
Anybody else happy? I'll just put that up, okay, good.
Yeah, this is a combination of science for the last couple weeks, but I'm also happy to be able to have a birthday. Thank you.
Wait, what?
Oh, sorry. It's my birthday of the week, and Sam, Sam, I love your people, thank you.
Oh.
I love your voice, Sam.
Sam, you're on.
What, what am I doing?
Happy birthday, team.
Oh, okay, now whose birthday?
It's Gina's birthday.
Oh, okay, ready? Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Gina. Happy birthday to you, and many more.
On my birthday, we went to the Jingle Rock Festival in Seattle, which is totally worth it, it was beautiful, I had a fantastic day at my family.
Anybody else happy?
Didn't bring any home? No, wow, no, because a little kind of bowl is six thousand dollars. Yeah, I was like.
We're auctioning it.
We're gonna get at least five hundred dollars for it.
I'm happy for Seahawks, and ballots go out today, make sure you go out and vote.
Yes. Right. Happy? Any more happy?
It's just not, it's Friday.
Anybody else happy? How are you? Happy?
I'm happy.
You sound happy.
Any happy?
I'm happy, um, the bowling night was really fun, and I'll probably, um, try to get Chris's bowl, because I had to keep them on, but yeah.
I'll put friends watch in in a minute. Cool, if we're all done, if I'm done, any more happy? How, uh, anybody? Okay, that's it, we're done.
Thank you. And we do have a new Sergeant of Arms, Mr. Kevin O'Brien. Has agreed to fill in while David's gone. So, um, that's exciting, and he would have been here this morning, but I believe something burned up. So our speaker this week, do you wanna introduce our?
Well, of course.
Our maybe speaker from Rockland.
Our, uh, one of our newest, uh, newest, just go ahead and tell us a little bit about himself. I'm gonna move the camera for you Zoomers.
All right, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi, Zoomers.
Hello.
So, yeah, Chris Martin, uh, and there's tons of Chris's in this club, so if you wanna call me Coldplay, you can do that. Um, as you can probably tell, I don't have a whole lot of life experience yet, so I'll just kind of talk about my life and kind of talk about some pivotal moments, and, uh, we'll go from there. So I am one of eight children, I've got six sisters and a twin brother who looks just like me. Um, I grew up in Centralia, born and raised, and you pass right through Centralia, if you've been to Oregon, so small town. I was a really active kid, so I just did everything from baseball, basketball, soccer, tennis, uh, I did some cheerleading in high school, because why not? Uh, I was in the symphonic band and the jazz band, I was a big tenor sax player, loved jazz band, so. There's any like community band stuff, love to go there, um, prefer. Um, hit some musicals in high school and college, so, uh, I've always said, I've never been like super, super stellar at one thing, I've always been pretty good at a bunch of different things. Fun fact, when I was fifteen, uh, my baseball team made it to the Babe Ruth World Series, and so we went to, uh, Jamestown, New York. So that was my first time flying a plane, and, uh, that was just a cool, really, really cool experience. Cool, so I went through the Centralia school system, you know, uh, pretty fun, uh, graduated high school in two thousand fourteen, uh, number one in my class, uh, it was a lot of fun. And I'm a big mom's boy, so right after I graduated, I said, okay, I wanna stay home, I wanna save money, so I went to Centralia College. And Centralia College is really cool, this is kind of where my technical career kickstarted. I definitely was not one of those kids that was just playing with computers all day, I was definitely, I was doing sports and doing band and singing, um, yes, uh, Centralia College is where, uh, my IT career kickstarted. And I remember, uh, like a lot of kids, a lot, a lot of freshman in college, I was like, what do I do with my life? Like, what do I wanna do? Um, you know, when you go through school, you take science and math and English, and that's all fun. And I wanted to take something that was just completely foreign to me, so I kind of thought I wanted to be an engineer, like my dad. And I took an engineering class, I hated it, and the teacher was mean and sucked, and not really. Okay, no more engineering. So then I took a computer science class. And, uh, I remember that first C++ programming class, and it kicked my butt, I was terrible at it, but I, I loved the challenge. So I said, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just kind of stick with this and, and see how it goes, so. After a year, I just was taking a bunch of computer classes and having a really, really cool time. And, um, I kind of realized that I was doing, uh, an associate of applied science, which I didn't really know what I was getting myself into, because I always wanted to go to a university. Um, so then a, a year in, I'm talking to a counselor and they say, hey, if you wanna transfer, you're gonna have to completely start over, which was kind of devastating, but I was a year in, I, I didn't wanna have to start over as a freshman to get like a transfer degree, so I said, okay, I'm gonna stick it out. So after two years at Centralia College, I graduated with an associate of applied science and computer science technology, which is cool. Uh, while I was at Centralia College, I also worked for the campus activities team, so planned some events. And I also got my first big boy job at the Lewis County, uh, P D as an IT intern, so jugged a lot of different things, and that was challenging. But the P D hired me on as a part-timer, so for that whole second year of college, I worked for the P D and the campus activities team, and was doing the full-time college thing, so that was a lot of fun. And when, uh, when I graduated from Centralia College, I had tough choices to make, because the P D was like, hey, stay here, like, you don't need to go anywhere, stay here, no worries. But I wanted to go to college, so I left P D and I went to Central Washington University, because luckily, they had a bachelor's of applied science that was my associate of applied science and transferred, so I got really, really lucky there, because I was told by a counselor, you're not gonna be able to transfer, so. Got really lucky there. So now I'm at Central Washington University, and from there, I also worked for the campus activities team there, so planned some events. Um, I think my role was the comedy, I did, I did comedy events, that was a lot of fun. Uh, I did Central Washington University for two years, and I ended up graduating with a bachelor's of applied science, and this is really long, information technology, administrative management, specializing in cybersecurity. That was a super fun degree, I also met my girlfriend there, that was great. Um, and then, you know, as I was getting to the end of, uh, my bachelor, I was kind of looking for jobs, and what do you know, the Lewis County P D had an opening. So I went right back home, moved right back in with mom and dad, and, uh, started working as an IT technician, and in there, I was kind of just a jack of all trades, it's a small utility, uh, I mean, it's a big county, Lewis County's big. Uh, but it was a small team, I kind of was just doing everything from computer repair to the cybersecurity to the anything tech, like, I just kind of the jack of all trades. And so I did that for a couple of years, and of course, I still have my girlfriend, and she's from Lake Stevens, I didn't even know what Lake Stevens was, I had never even heard of it before. So I did that for a couple of years while I'm looking for jobs, and then COVID hits, and so that made it really hard to, to find a job, but, um, my girlfriend's mom works in the And so that made it really hard to find a job. But uh, my girlfriend's mom works in the district office. And so she told me about this kind of random tech job that opened up at the Lake Stevens School District doing data stuff. Uh, I was like, that sounds fun. Like, let's, let's apply. And uh, so I got an interview and um, I'm convinced that the only reason why I got the job is because I wore a tie to the interview. So lesson learned, wear a tie to the interview. So yeah, then all of a sudden now, I'm the data integration specialist at Lake Stevens School District. Kind of jumping in in the heart of COVID. And I have no idea what the job means or what, what it's about. And uh, that was a little over a year ago and, and uh, it's been a blast. I've been loving it. A large uh, part of my role is to kind of take the data uh, from Skyward and just send it to third-party applications so that students and teachers can log into these applications and uh, they can see the correct data and they can do their Acelonous learning, Stenonous learning. So it's been fun. It's been super, super rewarding. Uh, I've had a blast. Um, I'm super lucky to be here. I love this job. And uh, yeah, I'm just super excited to see what, what a normal world is like because I've only ever known this job from a COVID perspective. So it's been fun. Uh, yeah, I've had, I've had a great time. Um, right now, I'm also working on my master. So I love Central, so I went back to Central. And I'm working on my masters in information technology administrative management. But this time I'm hopefully vocalizing, sorry, focusing in uh, the structures of data analytics. So it'll be fun. It's gonna be challenging. Been a lot right now, but that's kind of how I thrive is just to keep myself really busy and really stressed, right? Uh, so a little though about my family. Most of my family still lives uh, in Centralia, in Lewis County. Um, so it's hard to get them to come up here. This is a pretty long drive for them. But my twin brother, who I've kind of talked a little bit about earlier, he just got his first job as a chiropractor in Bellevue. But he did a lot more schooling than me. And he's got the DC next to his name now. But it's been super fun having him up here. Um, it's also really nice to get free adjustments. I actually got one of my sisters a job at the Lewis County PD before I left. So she works as a customer service representative there. And she loved it. So I still have ties with the PD. Uh, fun fact, I applied to Snowpud. They didn't get it. So tried my best to transfer, but they, they didn't like it. Um, my girlfriend works for the Everett School District as an HR specialist. Uh, so it's kind of fun when people do the school district stuff. Right now, we are uh, house hunting, which is really stressful and really fun at the same time. So wish me luck there. We actually put an offer on a house. We're here on Sunday if it worked out. So we'll see. Um, I don't have any kids, uh, but I am a father to a mini gold noodle. A mini, she's awesome. Uh, we live in the Lake Fasty Reserve and um, you know, on my downtime, I like to just hang out with family. Uh, I like to watch movies. Gosh, I love to travel. You know, that's one of the biggest things I like to do. I definitely work to play. My play is definitely traveling. Uh, but I'm also an avid gamer. I'm a, I'm a video gamer. Uh, PC games, of course. I'm a computer guy. So yeah.
What's your favorite?
Okay, this is really, really nerdy. But League of Legends, if you've heard of it, it's kind of, it's a really popular game. Uh, but it's yeah, really nerdy. And League of Legends is kind of my favorite game right now. That's the game that just keeps up and I don't know, I've put a lot of time in that. More time than I've got to. And yeah, you know, I, I'm just really excited to start uh, my volunteering career. I don't, you know, have a whole lot of, you know, I just graduated from college a couple of years ago and I've been working. Uh, and I love Lake Stevens. I've only been here a little over a year. But it just, it feels like home to me. And, and this was such a nice transition for me because I'm from a small town, you know, and I didn't want to just run into this big town. And you know, when I think of like up north, I think of Seattle and the hustle bustle. But Lake Stevens has just been such a cool environment and the community is amazing. Uh, so I've really just fallen in love with Lake Stevens over the past year. I'm super excited to to volunteer and be back. I mean, this is, this is my home now. So I uh, I want to get back. And that is kind of a, a quick and dirty uh, rundown of my life in a short sweep. So yeah.
So you said you're saying, so does that mean that you're gonna give Sam a little run for her money for saying happy birthday?
I can't follow up with that. I mean, Sam, that was amazing. You got a perfect pitch.
That's sweet.
Sure. And you know, my brother and I used to perform in Lewis County in the community. Uh, I miss that a lot. You know, of course, we kind of went our different ways. And he did his chiropractor thing and he was going to school in Oregon. And here I was up in Oregon. So it's fun that we're back. And now that he's a little bit closer, if you guys ever need some live music or something, you know, we'll work for beer or food. So. Oh, gosh.
Did you know that was coming?
I don't know about that. I mean, if my brother was, was here, I would, I would absolutely say, yeah. Um, it's acoustic stuff. So I'm, I'm, I play the guitar. He plays the bass guitar. We just love to harmonize. So Sam, I'm sure you know that. That'd be fun to do a three-part with you, Sam. We'll get the band together for sure. Uh, yeah, anything acoustic, country, uh, pop. So.
Well, you realize that you just volunteered to be a part of the entertainment for our next corpse and case.
That's correct. Yeah, let's do it. I mean, yeah, we need to be, yeah.
That would be really deep.
For sure. If I did quit my job and pursue my passion, it would be as a musician. It's just funny because my name is Chris Martin.
I think it'd be really cool, you know. Kevin and Gary are like the MC.
Yeah.
You got two guys off the side, just like the late night shows.
There you go. Oh, yeah, yeah. And we used to do the open mic nights at Central and that was a blast. Yeah, we, we definitely missed it. Yeah. Any other questions for me?
So Central, are you able to do that all online?
Yeah.
That's really cool.
Yep, yep. So it's, it's fun. I'm doing it full-time, which I probably bid off more than I can shoot. Hey.
Full-time?
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
We're gonna, we're gonna get it done though.
House hunting, full-time job here?
Yep. Full-time job here and the full-time school thing. But like I said, I like being busy.
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah. Knock it out. I'm, I love the data stuff. I really, I love the data analytics stuff. It's kind of my niche. So yeah, a blast.
Thank you.
So if you send me your contact, I'll send you Kate, who is, uh, Kate Ross is in charge of our community band and she would love to have you.
Yep.
They practice at the Mel, they're really good.
That's cool, yeah.
They're really good. I think it's a great addition. Okay, so we're a little bit early this morning. Does anyone have anything else? Don't forget, we're on Zoom next Friday. Uh, Zoom next Friday, Christmas holiday party on December eighth at Rustic Court, five thirty. Um, Oh, Harvest Fest. Um, if you want to help out with the booth, it's not too late to sign up. It's gonna be amazing. It is a, it's a cool event.
Next Tuesday at the Swim Beach.
Next Tuesday at the Swim Beach. Um, they're gonna do community service project. It's gonna be amazing. Uh, rain or shine, right?
Could be nice.
Mr. Strand? Um.
Yes, and bring gloves if you have some. But yes, rain or shine doesn't matter. We're gonna do it. So.
Then go to the brewery when you're done?
If we get done early enough, yeah, if you want to. Because I know some people have to go home to kids and whatnot and families. But yeah, I mean, I don't think it's gonna take us too long if we have enough people that want to show up and join. But yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, so that's a great weekend. Bye, zoomers. Was it great presentation? What's your separate phone? Okay, what kind of house are you looking for? I've got three coming up. What are you looking for? What's your budget? Okay, these are gonna be five twenty-five. What are, what is? Melissa, we're all in there. You're that guy? That is so awesome. Then I think I remember. Or three people there, Mike's birthday. I mean, I was like, what's your name? Were you there because they were talking about the boyfriend, but one of them, but the other boyfriend, you're there. Julia's boyfriend was there. Oh, my God. Yes, sure. I except for the box. The box was blue. They're all labeled. It's the only one that didn't have a label on it. It is the extra one. All right, thank you so much.
You were huge.
All right, I'm out. All right.
Yeah.
All right. Why are you in the last two years?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Well, I'm gay. I know, that's why I didn't make four of those. Who was that? Whatever.
You can make it smaller.
Yes, that's what elves do. I mean, I'm here, I sit all. Yeah, they do do that because they know what they want. And they all want to. I know, but if you're, I'm not, I can't get involved. Um, yeah, I can't. And especially if you're assigned to one.
Oh.
And I, I can't.
So.
You know, the thing too, about when you're just on the table, you're not, you're not. Yes, it's a fantasy. It's Instagram.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hundred percent. I have the same daughter. I think my, my daughter may have graduated.
Okay.
And for you, everybody.
Yeah. But yeah, we will, uh, it all goes. I mean, I'm definitely not.
Yeah, but I understand.
Yeah, I get the water dry.
Yeah, that's a lot, a lot of add-ons, you know. And any, you know, the other parts of the Bible. So, yeah, I know. That's the thing too.
It's, it's near. At least the point is, we'll find old places. Fix it up or reget it, you know, the pictures, modernize. I just follow words.
I know, things are difficult. That's what you can, you need to do. I mean, because so all of my, you know, my client, my, my.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, and she's like. Right? In a development, so we can definitely come with you. And then like all this stuff. I get it. And that's what makes it fun. You know, and be worried.
It's been crazy though.
Yeah. Well, if anything, you know, if it doesn't work out, call me because I'd love to help you.
Cool, yeah.
And um, you know, because there are other developments. Than that one. Because you're, it, honestly, you're offering your document already.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's in yet.
Oh, I thought you said you were.
Well, well, we, we signed and everything, but I don't know if she's submitted yet. Like, it's, it's ready for her to do. Because I think like definitely, I, I'm not like.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, I initialled something yesterday. And that's, that's the only thing.
A whole bunch of pages?
No, just one thing.
Maybe that's, oh, so the, the builder must have a one sheet.
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but you don't, yeah, she needs to wait until, because that's why you then you find out what's already in.
Yeah.
She, she should.
And I think, I think.
Okay.
I don't think it's, yeah.
I hope you get it. I think that's amazing.
It's not the worst in the world.
Because there's a lot of new construction and, and prices are coming down all the time.
Really?
Yeah.
That's the thing. What's definitely, new construction, they're not going uh, for as much over asking as like older houses. Because we were looking to look for it. It was listed at five forty and it was already up to six. And at the time, we were just like, okay, like, you know, when that's gonna be. And we needed to do some stuff. So it, I think it, I think for it was, it ended up being, well, for instance, six hundred, a hundred. Old house was six, six hundred.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's, I think there's gonna be a lot of extra stuff that she's not thinking about.
Well, that's the thing. You just need to have the cash before you cut ours after closing. Don't do anything before. Um, if you want your, your financial position to be exactly the same today as it is right before closing, you know.
It doesn't, it doesn't close until it's, it closes.
Right, but you're on, your agent should tell you, just like Chris would tell you too. You're on lock yet.
For sure. And that's why I'm nervous.
Don't buy anything. Don't go, oh, there's a house for buying a fridge. Don't do any of that. Although you're not being able to get a fridge.
Yeah.
Plan for that. If you have cash to go buy a fridge, I would go do it because if, um, back order, um, my client's buying new construction, then they're using mini fridges for two months until the fridge comes in because you can't.
It takes, it takes a different month.
Yes, they're having a really hard time getting fridges. But if you get one, pay cash. Don't put it on a credit unless you talk to your guy, your lender.
Well, that's hard because it's like, okay, we've been a couple of months. If we get it, we'll move out again with our parents. And it's kind of chill there for a couple of months. So we got to rent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I'm really glad you said that because I haven't seen it, of course, well, why isn't it on October? You know what I was getting at?
Don't put any hand credit cards. Unless you talk to your lender, your ratios might be fine. But that's how, um, I've heard in my life, my clients have never done it, but I've heard horror stories of, um, you know, people go out, they're all excited. Or they go on a trip and you, if you, everything that you put on your credit cards, right before you close, they're gonna pull your credit again.
Okay.
Right? And it's all about ratios. About how much your debt to income is and all of that. They're gonna pull all that in before.
So it'd be okay. So like, when we, and if we did it, I have a text on my card. And I actually paid a, a chunk off recently, like since then. Is, is, like, is that okay to, like, pay off?
I'm sure you're wondering about that because sometimes that's what it's there too. You just gotta really talk to them because they know the whole thing about the whole thing and what your profile's gonna look like. Like she said, the whole racial thing. There's some people that will say, I'm gonna go and pay my whole credit card off. And then they're like, well.